... voting session, voting session. So power vested in me, calling tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to this evening's voting session, our Borough Council held an executive session on personnel and legal matters. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all the Borough Departments for the hard work that went into making our St. Patrick's Day on March 16th, the parade such a success. Thanks to the Public Services Department, our Fire Department, our Fire Police, our Police Department, our Emergency Management Team, the Drone Unit, and our Admin Team. It's a lot of people to make a day go as well as it did. And then there's the special thank you to Paul Granowski and Shawna Weisell for their efforts in making everything run smooth with the AOA. So congratulations to all who have participated. I think I heard that it was the most well-attended parade so far with over 30,000 people. So what a great tribute to the staff and the volunteers who actually had all those people in the borough and out of the borough very timely, and the borough looked great by Sunday. So thank you to everyone. Want to do special recognition for our junior firefighters. They volunteered to distribute our candy during the parade this year. It was such a memorial and special day for the borough. So thank you to our junior firefighters so that we didn't have to run up and down Fayette Street and hold up the parade this year. So thanks to everybody. It was a good day. At this point, I will ask if there is any public comment related to any of the agenda items this evening. Hearing no public comment, we will get started. So this evening, we have a few presentations. The first one is we would like to recognize Conshohocken Fire Department for receiving the Swift Water Type 1A State Certification. So Chief Gunning, would you like to come up to the podium? Tell us a little bit about this certification and what makes it so special for our team.
Thank you. I am very honored to stand before you tonight to announce our department's recent designation by the Pennsylvania Voluntary Rescue Service Recognition Program as a Swift Water 1A rescue team. This makes us, and this is important, one of only four in the state of Pennsylvania. Reaching this milestone required not only procurement of several pieces of advanced water rescue equipment, but also the mastery of each vehicle's utilization and maintenance. The team endured over 72 hours of training and was tested on each discipline with both physical and written examinations. As chief, I am incredibly proud of the hard work and commitment shown by these 16 members over the past two years. With the continued development of our community, it is our duty to protect and serve the residents with the best ability, confidence, and professionalism we can provide. Congratulations to the men and women who earned this prestigious certification. Thank you.
Before I announce the next presentation, I have one other matter of business that I neglected to do. So Ms. Checo, would you mind calling roll call for us so that we can actually make motions?
Yes, of course. Thank you. Councilmember Shemeluski. Councilmember Serna.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Ellam.
Here.
Councilmember Ty.
Here.
Vice President Kingsley.
Here.
President Sokolowski.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we can actually get to work. Next up for presentations is to consider approving a proclamation 2024-02 recognizing our Conshohockens Women's Business Group on 75 years of service. Mayor Aronson?
We have with us the president of the Borough Council. Thank you for being here. I'm gonna read it. Whereas the Greater Contracting Business and Professional Women's Club was chartered on March 15, 1949, and whereas the membership of the Business Professional Women's Club Pennsylvania includes more than 1,000 members and 45 local organizations in 11 districts throughout the state, and whereas the Greater Conshohocken Business and Professional Women post regular candidate forums, local women speakers, panel discussions, charity drives, and donate locally to the community, and whereas the Borough of Conshohocken supports numerous female business owners, female council president, vice president, borough manager, director of recreation services, fire inspector, firefighters, and women in various numerous other critical roles, now therefore be resolved that the Borough of Conshohocken wishes to extend its appreciation and commend the Greater Contracting Business and Professional Women on their 75 years of dedicated service to the Conshohocken community. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, with that, I would need a motion to approve the proclamation 2024-02 recognizing the Conshohocken Women's Business Group for their 75 years of service.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we will be conducting an interview for a vacancy on the Friends of Conshohocken parks. At this time, I would like to introduce Eileen Faye to come up to the podium. And how are you?
Very efficient.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So Eileen, have you served on any boards or commissions for the Borough of Conshohocken?
I haven't, no.
Okay, what makes you want to do the Friends of Conshohocken?
I have been, I guess, a member, I'm going, I'm 20 years this year, a member of the Conshohocken community. I became homeowner in 2010, rented with some friends before that. And I have witnessed honestly how the parks really add to the community life. Particularly Marywood Park, I walk my dogs around there every morning. I love that park. I love the Halloween costume thing that they do at the party every year, the contest, the Christmas tree lighting. I've taken my nieces on the things to play with. And I just think Marywood Park in particular is just such a beautiful add to the community. And it wasn't here when I first, or I mean, it was, but it wasn't what it is today when I first moved here. So you can see how the community really rallies around it. As to what I can add, I think that I have some experience in fundraising, so I know that that's an aspect of the Friends Committee, and I'm happy to participate and help with that. I can be very persuasive when I want to be, so I'm happy to strong-arm to the extent that that needs to happen in fundraising. I'm interested in, you know, looking at the agenda items, I guess, that are already on the docket that have been approved and kind of moving those along. And then also what's being proposed and how can we add to the community as it goes forward. I know the Summer Concert Series, truthfully, I live pretty close to Suck Cliff and I've never been to one, which is a shame. So I need to do that, but I also think that we should do a really good job of making people aware of that Summer Concert Series. I think that's about it. Anyone have any questions?
So I do. So I will say, you answered my first one. You're excited and anxious about raising money.
Of course.
So I know I'm putting some words in your mouth, but.
Oh, yeah.
Excited for you.
Absolutely, yes.
That's a major part of the job. Have you looked at the calendar? Are you okay with the schedule when the meetings are?
Yes, I was invited to a few meetings actually already, and I had an informal discussion with one of the members, Brian. I haven't actually participated in one of the meetings. It hasn't come to pass, but yes, I'm okay with the schedule.
Okay, because the time commitment I always get worried about for people, so.
Sure. I mean, I do travel for work, so there could be times when I'm not available, but I'll do my best. I don't foresee it being, I work full-time from home, which is down the street, so I don't really foresee that being too much of an issue.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Eileen, do you have any plans or any ideas, I guess, would be more, I think, of maybe making improvements in the other parks? In your area, there's that little Second Avenue Park and Hidden Salvation over there.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with those?
I am, and I feel like that's really hidden away and kind of no one sees it or knows about it. So that's something that we could probably improve upon, but I don't have any sort of like personal agenda or. I really kind of would, like, I'm not gonna come in and say like, okay, everybody, I know what we need to do. I'm much more, let's see what's being done, what's being considered, and to the extent that something should or I see something, I will certainly bring it up. But no, I don't want to be pushing anything just yet when I'm the newbie. But I do know that park and I do know that it's sort of tucked away back there. And I don't feel like, I think maybe the people that live right there know about it and really nobody else, so we could do something about that.
Anyone else? Well, we thank you for your interest in coming to interview tonight. We won't be doing any voting tonight, but the next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
So thank you for being here.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Nice meeting you all, too. Take care.
Up next is a presentation from our EAC on a local climate action plan. So I will invite Tim Beckel and Justin Claffey to come on up to the podium and.
Hi, everyone.
You guys are all much faster than my brain is working today, so thank you.
We rushed up here. Good to see everyone. Tim Beckel, Vice Chair of the EAC.
Justin Claffey, Member EAC.
So we wanted to present the Local Climate Action Program update for you all. So we spoke last to Borough Council a few months ago, early November, kind of giving a high-level overview of the program as we were just getting it started. Now we're probably halfway to two-thirds through it. And thought it was a good time, an appropriate time to give you an update. And it's some new Borough Council members that wanted to give you the opportunity to kind of review it fresh and make sure you're involved. And what I appreciate, both of you for coming to some of our EAC meetings recently. I really appreciate that involvement. So before we get into the program itself, wanted to kind of give an overview of the last few years' local climate action here in the community. So the big one is back in 2019, the Contract of Borough Council passed the Ready for 100 Resolution committing the borough to 100% renewable energy by 2020 with renewable electric by 2035 as an interim goal. Now, the way that resolution and vision moving that forward was an energy transition plan that would have been steered by an Energy Transition Task Force. For a few reasons, primarily the pandemic, that approach kind of got sidetracked for a longer term. So one of the things that we'll talk a little more about is how LCAP has been and will be a great substitute for that plan as far as pursuing the goals of the Ready for 100 Resolution. Talk a little bit more about that in a second. Then also we have the Mayor Solar Proclamation, so advocating for solar, the adoption of solar energy in our community. Back in 2022, the EAC presented Electric Vehicle Charging Initiative. Obviously, that's just by the obvious force of nature, market forces, that's moving forward. And I know the boroughs were working hard on that as well. And then last year, we had our first Green Fest, so it brought a lot of different exhibitors and folks into the community on Earth Day last year to bring environmentally friendly businesses, different ways to impact the environment here in our community. And we're having our next one, late next month. We'll talk more about that at the end. So LCAP, Local Climate Action Program. So going back to the Ready for 100 Resolution, the Energy Transition Plan that I mentioned. So when we were talking about that with Borough Council and looking to move that forward, one of the things was partnering with some sort of paid consultant to put together that energy transition plan for the community, either directly just for Conshohocken or partnering with other communities to lower the cost. But there would have been a budgetary cost to that. We were talking if we were able to partner with communities, a $10,000 to $20,000 commitment from the borough at that time and more if we weren't able to partner with other communities. The great thing from, you know, the budget perspective here is that LCAP is completely free out-of-pocket wise for the borough, so no cost to taxpayers, except for the time, the volunteer time on our part and time that the Borough Administration in particular has helped gather information. It's been really critical to make the program successful to this point. So LCAP, we've partnered, basically, we've partnered with a Penn State student, Calvin Lee. He's in the Air Force currently, but looking for his career after he leaves the service. He's been a great partner for us, doing kind of the grunt work of getting this program, moving this program forward. So Justin and I meet with him weekly and, you know, kind of just really plunk away. So there's two phases to the program. Phase one, we've just completed, so greenhouse gas emission inventory. So what that is, is basically collecting all the information to tell us what is the greenhouse gas emissions for our community, entire community, contract and borough, residents, commercial, waste, sewer, everything, transportation. And when we looked at this, we looked at LCAP as the EAC for a number of years, wanting to get this part accomplished, because as you all know, what gets measured gets improved. So if we don't know what our baseline is, there's no way to really know for making progress on our Ready for 100 goal. So we've completed that, and we'll tell you more about that in a minute or two. Then phase two is Local Climate Action Report or action items that we're currently working through. And basically what that'll be is putting together some potential initiatives for the borough to consider, whether they be educational, policy changes, really just what can we do as far as translating that goal, using policy to translate that into progress against our kind of change goals. I'll let Justin do a little bit more of a deep dive.
Thank you. Yeah, so going into the details of what we've done thus far, this is just a timeline. So we begun this summer, and the end of the semester was, as Tim said, the inventory collection. So getting that baseline, which was obviously vital to figuring out how we go about the report, which is the phase two. In January, we had Calvin present to the EAC and whoever else wanted to be there, January 18th. That went really well, and then that kind of kicked off our phase two into putting together the action plan itself. So as we move forward here, we got the final webinar for Spring Cohort in April, May, and we'll have a draft to present come summer 2024. So with the greenhouse gas emission inventory presentation, Calvin, as I mentioned, presented that. And this is, you know, just kind of an introduction to the presentation. Calvin is in the top right that you can barely see there, giving him as much recognition as we can right there. Next one.
So we have a short clip of the presentation. It should be embedded in the presentation, the PowerPoint.
Why don't we just move along, like, just keep going with the presentation? Yeah, Paige, just bring up the.
We'll circle like that to you after.
You're saying that there is a link that you want to show of Calvin's presentation that he gave to the EAC. So I think what would be a great idea is that if we get the link, we'll make sure the elected officials get a copy of that link. They can watch it, and then we can find, figure out a way in terms of borough social media to get it out to the public. We'll work collaboratively with you on that one. Okay?
Thank you. So continuing on, this is just kind of a general overview of some of the impacts we've had here in the borough as far as climate change. Next slide. And next up here is the baseline. So this was based on 2022, greenhouse gas emissions. Shawna was a huge help in getting a lot of this information. So the baseline was 57,540 megatons of CO2 equivalent, which I can get into if anyone wants to get into the details of that. And then we have the chart showing exactly what it was. So the biggest impacts, as most people would have guessed, are energy usage, commercials in green, residential is in blue. So that was the majority of it. Next one came up is transportation, followed by that was solid waste, processing, fugitive, and water and wastewater to create that. And just kind of kudos to the borough here is the two boroughs above. So above the green has got Carlisle with a population of a little over double us in 22,000, and you can see they produce 241,000 megatons. And then we have Lewisburg Borough, who is about half the size of us, that still produces more than us at 59,000. So we are on a good path, but this was a phenomenal, you know, thermometer to test where we are at the present day. Here, the green is commercial energy. This one dives a little bit into the transportation side of things in particular. So the charts we have here, the big chart, the blue is residential, transportation. The red is borough vehicles or government vehicles. And then we have diesel versus gasoline, and then some smaller items there. And this was actually the Arc GIS software or whatever we were able to get, a very accurate kind of snapshot of the borough itself and this transportation stuff. That was probably, I would say, the most difficult portion of this. And currently, as we're doing the report, we are trying to bring the Conshohocke into this to get an idea of what that can do. So phase two, kind of diving into the details of that. So the scope of work, the Local Climate Action Report. So there's a software called ICLI that can model out different scenarios. So saying we go 100% renewable energy in the grid come, you know, 2035, things like that. We can model that out and how that looks as the population grows. So again, a lot of data we've had to collect, and Shawna and others have been a great help to that. So pretty much our plan for the forecast was, we have the baseline, we will do suggestions as well as what we're calling kind of a utopia, where there might be some out-of-the-box things that you see at the end of how we can really take it down to zero essentially. But we want to kind of give that broad view when we present at the end of this. And then we'll have the written report to hand over at the end.
And one of the things I'll jump in and just mention is, we're still going through this right now. So if there are things that you as the borough or Borough Council members want to suggest as far as, hey, why don't you explore X, why don't you explore Z, this is the time for us to be able to do that with, again, free help that's dedicated, that's knowledgeable about modeling this kind of data. So I would just say that we welcome, and the EAC has been hard at work with suggestions, but we welcome any suggestions you might have as far as ideas or interventions that you would like us to explore as we continue through.
And just kind of an idea of what we're looking at in that vein is the borough going with 100% renewable energy pretty much per that Ready for 100 plan. Also what bikes would impact, the Conshohockeas I mentioned, things like that. I think single-use plastic came up as well. So things that are being in the works, EV charging stations, things like that, we are trying to incorporate at this moment. But if you have anything else, yeah, we'd love to hear what we can put in the model. Yeah, that's it.
So I just wanted to remind you all about some of our upcoming events. So tomorrow night is our monthly EAC meeting here at Borough Hall. Welcome any of you to attend, of course, any members of the public. We always enjoy and have had a lot of folks from the public come through and get more involved, and it's been really great. I mean, that's how a lot of folks actually join the EAC, is just coming to some meetings and getting involved in one way or another. And the nice thing is we have so much going on as an EAC that no matter what your interests, there's probably something of an environmental nature that you could get involved with in our community. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have Conshoe Green Fest, the second one, coming up Saturday, April 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Marywood Park. Pray for great weather again, because it's going to be all outdoors this year. But, you know, very excited to have that again, bringing again great exhibitors, companies, you know, public entities, bringing knowledge and the services, knowledge about services to our community. And then our spring community cleanups, we have two cleanups each year, one in the spring, one in the fall. So we've scheduled our spring cleanup for Saturday, May 18th, 10:00 a.m. at the community center. Everything that you need is provided. Just show up and you'll help us clean the east side of Fayette Street in spring. Any questions?
Just a comment, going back to the plan. So as you're kind of formulating this and putting this together, and since we have the resource of the state, I would think about how the stages of behavior change fit into this, right? So we can throw as many plans against the wall, and we can throw as much policy against the wall. But the bigger question is, how do we, not only as elected officials, but as residents of the borough and citizens of our state, get through those stages of behavior change? And then what are things and tools that we can help support? Because I think that will be the important piece as spearheading these types of initiatives that, you know, it's not something that we shove down people's throats. We have to go through those phases of change and identify where we may have pain points, where things might go through much easier with explanation and education. But then there's other pieces that will be pocket-related and how maybe the state has seen behavior modifications. And so I would build that into.
Sure, there's two examples that come to mind of things that we're looking at. One is transitioning. One is transitioning heating and cooling from existing electric fuel oil, natural gas to heat pumps. And there's a lot of IRA incentives for adopting that technology. So one of the things we are looking at modeling is, well, what if we do a really good job of educating the community? We, and the nice thing about this tool is that it has assumptions about the baseline adoption of different technologies. So heat pumps is one, electric vehicles is another. So we could ask ourselves, well, are we going to do a better job and be better than the average? And we can model what, what our impact could be with those kind of interventions. And then, as I mentioned, the electric vehicle is another one where the, the software actually models that, I think it's 30% adoption of electric vehicles by 2030. And so we ask, one of the questions we have to ask ourselves, well, are there interventions that we're potentially looking at or who would advocate that would get us higher and therefore lower our greenhouse gas emissions as a community?
Thanks. Anyone else?
No, I just want to thank you both for, I know you volunteer a lot for the EAC and then to take this on over the past year with the additional meetings and extra work. I really appreciate the extra time and, and work that you put in to make this whole program successful.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is our consent agenda. First item is to approve and adopt the February 7th and February 21st regular meeting minutes. So could I have a motion to approve and adopt the 7th and the 21st of February meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the February ending treasurer's report and accounts payable. So I would need a motion to approve the February ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of $905,000, no, $905,514.44.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is some unfinished business. So the first item would be considering appointing two applicants to our sewer authority board. The board met with four candidates and interviewed four candidates for the positions. And at this time, I would be looking for an, a motion to appoint Mr. Jack Ambler and Ms. Christine Bertino to the sewer authority board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, if anybody's with us. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving the Second Amendment to the settlement agreement for 401 433 Washington Street project. This is subject to final review by the borough solicitor and borough manager. With that, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving the Flyers alumni special events request for June of 2025. And that would be contingent upon our final review and approval by the borough administration and the satisfaction of all the borough's special events requirements included in the insurance. At that, could I have a motion to approve the Flyers alumni special event request for June of 2025?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consider authorization, I'm sorry, consider authorizing advertisement for bids for the Suck Cliff Park Trail renovation project and the Suck Cliff Park Stormwater PRP project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider awarding the Afield Roof Project bid to Munn Roofing Corporation in the amount of $238,000. With that, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of discontinuing the use agreement with the Concha Hocken Bears. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to discontinue the use agreement with the Concha Hocken Bears organization.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving Resolution 2024-05, supporting and providing input on certain legislative priorities and resolutions of Pennsylvania State Association of Burrows regarding compensation of elected borough officials. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve a Resolution 2024-05, supporting and providing input on legislative priorities and resolutions of the PA State of Burrows regarding the compensation of elected borough officials.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And with this one, I will ask for actually a roll call vote. Ms. Checo?
Yes, Councilmember Shimaleski?
No.
Councilmember Serna?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Fry?
No.
Vice President Kingsley?
Yes.
President Sokolaski?
Yes.
That is one, two, three, four, five yeses and two noes.
Okay, with that, motion carries to support the Resolution 2024 to provide input to certain legislative priorities and resolutions for the PA State Burrows, Association of Burrows regarding the compensation of elected officials. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is new business. And under new business, we will be considering the approval of a chief of police employment contract. Just want to explain the process a little bit that we went through for this appointment. It was a long process, but I think that we were thorough and we had a lot of people involved in the process. And I think we learned a lot from the process. So just to go quickly through the process, the Borough Council formulated a Police Chief Search Committee in 2023. The search committee consisted of the Borough Council President, Vice President and Mayor. In early 2023, the search committee met to formalize and define the type of candidate the Borough Council and the mayor wanted as the next police chief. And special consideration was given to unique needs of the businesses and residents of our borough. The search committee identified leadership, management and interpersonal skills that a candidate needed to demonstrate to be considered for the chief's position. Ultimately, the final candidates would need to be the individual who would best advance the department as a professional and innovative police agency into the future. Along with demonstrating supervisory and leadership abilities, specific emphasis was placed on the individual's ability to identify community issues, develop innovative responses and issue corrective action plans as applicable. In early June, the borough posted notice that they would start the search process for the next chief of police and began accepting applicants. The application process was due August 7th of 2023. The borough received 45 applications. After internal review of the applications, candidates who, we did an internal review of the applicants, candidates who did not meet the minimum requirements were removed from consideration on the list. In October of 2023, the search committee reviewed and discussed the final list of applicants and confirmed final of seven applicants that would be considered for interview. The search committee interviewed all seven candidates utilizing a list of 29 questions that were geared specifically to address the unique needs of the borough's community. Three finalists were selected of the seven, and the three finalists interviewed with all seven Borough Council members and the mayor in a public forum, format, to ensure that our final candidate selected would be able to publicly satisfy the needs of the community. Borough Council and the mayor deliberated over the final interviews and accounted for all the feedback received to date from our borough residents, community members and businesses to select the best candidate. And early in March of 2024, the council selected a final candidate for the position of chief of police and offered this position to Dave Lennon, who has been serving as the borough's acting chief and lieutenant for the past eight and a half months. Dave graciously accepted this offer. This evening, we're formalizing the terms of his employment agreement, which have been negotiated and are ready for council's consideration. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all the candidates who applied to the borough of Concha Hocken. Your interest in the borough is much appreciated. I'd also like to thank my fellow search committee members, council members and the mayor for hard work and diligence through this process. I'd like to thank our community who provides the valuable input on a regular basis. We were able to utilize all the feedback in our selection and search process for this chief of police position. And then finally, I'd like to thank Dave Lennon for dedicating 23 years of his career to the borough of Concha Hocken to date and truly embodying the vision for the future of the Concha Hocken Police Department. We know that this process wasn't easy, but you did persevere. We expect nothing less of you during your tenure as the chief of police. It'll be a lot of hard work, but we know you're up for the challenge. Thank you for continuing to serve our community, and we look forward to working collaboratively with you to elevate our police department to the elite status that we expect to carry under your leadership. Anyone have any other comments about the process that you would like to speak to?
Yep, just congratulations.
Okay.
All right. I would like to say something. Part of the process and part of what we were looking for in a chief has also come from the way that we've seen the borough evolve. So the things that I know that, you know, my constituents want, as well as each of the council members and their respective constituents, we felt that we had, we've come to the point where we feel extremely confident that Dave can carry those out. So we all, like, we've been elected for different reasons by different constituents. And to come together to say, this is what our vision for the future of the borough is, and for Dave to be able to say, yes, I, I envision that as well, I think is, is very tremendous and a, a sign that we are moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Adrian. Anyone else? All right. Hearing no other information from council members, I would be looking for a motion to approve the chief of police appointment, employment contract with Dave Lennon, subject to a final review by our borough solicitor and borough manager.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have anyone opposed? Motion unanimously carries. All right, next up is considering approving 105 East 10th Avenue zoning escrow release in the amount of $24.60 plus interest. If so inclined, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consider approving 227 Washington Street zoning escrow release in the amount of $1,097.57 plus interest.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item for a motion is consider approving 121 Maple Street zoning escrow release in the amount of $42.13 plus interest. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving 344 West 11th Avenue zoning escrow release in the amount of $311.03 plus interest.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That was our last item on our agenda for our voting meeting. At this point, I would open the floor for public comment. Sure, come on up to the podium and let us know who you are, please.
Hi, my name is Carmen Musitano. I'm at 103 Suck Cliff Lane in the borough's Fourth Ward. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to thank the residents of the Fourth Ward who joined me in strongly opposing zoning hearing number Z 2023-19. The first hearing was in November of '23, and then there were a couple of delays by the petitioner's lawyer in December and, and in January. And then we continued in February, and the final hearing was this past Monday night. And in a six or seven to zero vote, your zoning board actually approved, unbelievably approved, allowing a moving company business to operate directly smack in the middle of a BR1 residential zoning district. This area overlooked Suck Cliff Park, so this will affect everyone who lives in Concha Hocken Borough. There were a throng of residents, neighbors who attended these hearings. Nearly every one of them strongly opposed it. The property in question was purchased approximately two and a half years ago. The former owner operated it as a salvage or a junkyard. Why a special exemption was given to him way back when in the 1970s, or whenever it actually happened, is beyond me. But the sale happened two and a half years ago. So with the sale, any special exemption that he had shouldn't copy over to the new owner. And even if it does copy over, it's a different line of business. A salvage yard, there's no activity there. But with a moving company, with diesel-powered trucks, multiple axle trucks, large dangerous trucks, you know, we talk about Conchi Green and Conchi Fest and all this stuff, electrical vehicles that we're talking about here tonight. And you just approved some reservations, renovations for Suck Cliff Park, which is really our most valuable resource that we have in the borough? You're going to have moving company trucks. People are going to look up in the path, they're going to see it, right from South Cliff Park. That's a disgrace. Absolute disgrace. So your zoning hearing board did it, and it was a unanimous decision. They couldn't even throw us a vote or two. They had to make it unanimous. What a slap in the face of every resident of this town. And how about the people on West 6th Avenue that just bought their home for $950,000? It's, you know, just a couple of homes down the hill. Oh, by the way, the original folks that bought that home, beautiful home, they canceled their settlement, probably because they found out about this moving company was possibly going to move in. So they canceled. So they didn't even buy the house. Somebody else did later, but they obviously didn't know about it. Another thing I want to mention is the zoning board only sends out notices if it's 250 feet of. feet away from the arying question, no matter what the zoning is about. And in this particular case particularly, it affected a lot more people than were just 250 feet away. This affects people on West 7th Avenue, in those beautiful tall townhouses that we know of that overlook the park. It affects them. They're going to be looking down at moving company trucks now. That's beautiful. It affects people on West 6th Avenue big time, because these trucks are going to be in their backyard, and also Suck Cliff Lane, going to be in their backyard too. So it was a disgrace, and there were many people at all three hearings that we had, and they all opposed it strongly, and I totally agree with them. I ended that hearing myself by asking a simple question, and I'm going to ask it to this council right now. And my question, when I presented it on February 26th, was as follows. Was a deal made to approve the zoning exemption by anyone on Borough Council or the zoning hearing board or Borough Administration before the parcels of land in 422 West 6th Avenue were actually purchased? Yeah, I got silence when I asked the question on February 26th, too. Dead silence. So that answers everything for me and for my neighbors. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? Hearing no additional public comment. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thank you, President Sekulowski. I want to congratulate Daniels on their second anniversary. I remember when they came before us for, for their approvals two years ago, I guess more than two years ago. What they done with the space is, is just really beautiful. So thank you to Daniels for being a wonderful community partner, for keeping up that beautiful space in our second ward. And then the second thing is, we had the CHOP benefit, the Philly Spin-In, two Sundays ago, and it would be understatement to say Conshohocken took over the event. We had three teams from Conshohocken, 50-plus riders. Conchi Elvis was there from West 6th Avenue, and the event raised over a million dollars for the CHOPS cardiac center. So, so thank you to the community for your support and to everyone that joined us down at the Live Casino in, in Philadelphia for that. And then, of course, thank you to everyone that made St. Patrick's Day happen. The parade was wonderful. I think seeing the look on our, our newer council members in particular was a lot of fun, but it was a great day and just great to have our community out, and probably the warmest day I can remember. So thank you to everyone behind the scenes that made that happen for us, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Ralph?
I'm good.
Daisy?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Ethel?
Nothing.
Adrian?
Green Fest, April 27th, Fellowship House, or Marywood Park around the Fellowship House. Be there.
Alan?
Yeah, I have a few comments tonight, actually. One is a bit of a process comment, just for people here and who follow our meetings. Topics that are in the unfinished business, we have discussed. We've had public hearings. Some of us have had private conversations. I just didn't want it to seem like, oh, it came up in front of us, we voted on it, and it went away. That's my first comment. My second comment is to congratulate Chief Dave Lennon, no longer the interim chief. We have high expectations for you, and I'm confident we're going to work together and exceed all of them. And then one, one extra comment, I don't typically do this, but Mr. Mazatana. So I'll answer your question for me. No. No, no deals were made. It's my understanding, and Mr. Peters can correct me, that that would be against the law.
Yeah, but didn't you just, you were in January? You just joined, right?
I, I don't want to get into an, an argument, right? I just, you posed a question, and I wanted to answer your question.
Yeah, for you. You joined in January. That's great. I'm talking about.
Again, Mr. Mazatana, I'm not, I, I appreciate your passion, and we need this, to be involved in the community, to make changes, and to follow what our community says, okay? I'm telling you, no, the answer to your question is no. That would be, that would be illegal. If, if I found out something like that was happening, we'd go after them, so.
Would anybody else like to answer that?
Carmen, I'll, I'll answer that question. That property was sold on, was purchased by the Compro riches on October 1st of 2021, and four members of council were not on council at that point. Mr. Chalmerski, Mr. Serna, Mr. Frye, and?
Ms. Elam.
And Ms. Elam. Sorry.
I'm happy to go on the record as well. No.
So they had nothing to do with it?
You just joined as well, correct?
Right. So those four were not?
And your question was that, and it's, yeah.
Thank you.
And I was on council for a couple of months at that time, and absolutely not.
And I've been on council for eight years, and there was absolutely no deals with that property that I was involved with.
Who else?
I've been on for nine, and no. Never, ever would any of these council people ever consider a deal with anybody, and personally, I resent that.
So, I mean, resent it?
So that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Do you want to answer?
I wasn't on council.
Thank you.
So you've got an answer from seven council members. So I hope that at least gives you an answer for this evening for the question that you asked.
Well, there were three areas that I asked about, wasn't it?
You ended with, you ended with a single question.
Council is one.
So we answered.
Borough Administration is two, and the zoning hearing board is three.
So council has answered your question for this evening.
Thank you, council.
You're very welcome. Ms. Checo, the announcement that I have is we have opening day for baseball.
Yes.
Coming up.
It is on April 13th.
April 13th.
Little League fields, well, Conshohocken baseball and softball. We'll have opening day on the 13th. They are very excited. They will have a parade that starts at the community center. It will cross Fayette Street. It will go to Suck Cliff Park. They are working on some really exciting initiatives right now in terms of fundraising. So you may see some changes that occur on their fields and scoreboards and other fun things that they're working on, but they will also have community events. So they would like it to be community-friendly, a community day, so come out to the park. Do you want to add anything to that, or?
Yeah, they have worked really, really hard, having worked closely with them. They have really put in a ton of effort from sponsorships and fundraising, and they've really taken an active role in making it really, really exciting league for the kids. So, yeah, definitely come out and support them if possible.
I think that they'll want to maybe come here at some point and reveal to you that what the fruits of their labor have been, so I don't want to give away the numbers that they've fundraised or whatnot, or their plans with that, but it's impressive.
That's great. And then, do we have an Easter egg hunt coming up?
We do.
Sorry. I can't remember anything tonight, apparently.
Yeah, I know. I just can't.
There's 300 pages in the Dropbox tonight, so.
I, I. I'll have to find it, but yes, we have an Easter egg.
Okay, so there'll be an Easter egg.
I will say, oh, I think Paul's, Paul's saving me. It is on March 30th. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
But registration is full, so we have maxed out. There is a high demand, but for those that are registered and participating, it will be a great time.
So we are seeing that as a theme for our community center, that it is in demand for the activities and functions that we provide. That is in our strategic plan for us to discuss for the future and what expansion would look like for our community events and our parks and recs. So I just want everybody to know that we are aware that we fill up fast for camps, for programming, and that is on our strategic plan to look at how we can meet, meet the community needs. Exactly.
It's a really good problem to have. I know that if you look eight years ago, we were the complete opposite, so we had a lot of programming and not a lot of participants, and now we have a lot of programming and it's full. So the director of recreation, Lauren, will be in front of you as we move through the budget process to talk about growth and strategic growth, what that means for her department, what that means for our elected officials in terms of budgeting capabilities and what you want to see for the future. A lot of you have expressed interest in quality of life and recreational amenities as well, so kind of all ties together into one cohesive conversation, and it will be a good one, moving into budget for 2025.
Great. All right. With that, I will call meeting adjourned this evening. Thank you.